is hereby called to order, I'd ask for Councilman Bill Brown to provide the invocation. And please remain standing for the pledge to the flag.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day that was given us. What a beautiful day it is. Thankful for the opportunity to meet this morning. We ask you to be with us and guide us and direct us in all the things that we discussed today. In the final end, may everything be pleasing to thee. We ask you all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming in this morning for a called meeting that is required under law related to the adoption of a millage rate. At this time, we have one item on our agenda, and that is discussion and action on a resolution for the 2024-2025 City of Dublin School District Final Tax Millage Rate. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2449, a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin to direct and approve the assessment levy and collection of the 2024 City of Dublin School District Final Tax Millage on behalf of the City of Dublin School District to authorize and direct the city treasurer and the city tax marshal to assess levy and collect said abolumen taxes and for other lawful purposes. As council is aware, the city school system advertised for a tax increase this year, and they held their last public hearing last night and submitted paperwork to both myself and the city treasurer, Mr. Daniels, certifying the amount that they need levied for the support and maintenance of education of the City of Dublin School District. That amount and the letter is in the certification and supporting documentation is all in your packets, is 18.564 mills. This represents a 24.71 increase, percent increase, in the millage rate from the rollback The local legislation that, just for, you know, council's benefit, the local legislation that created the school district, one of the provisions provides that they are to annually certify to the mayor and council the amount that they need levied for the support and maintenance of the school system. And the way the language is worded is that the mayor and council shall levy said tax for the school district. So we have this resolution prepared for you to make this official.
Okay. Before we go any further, I just want to make sure beyond any doubt that the City of Dublin is required to adopt this rate. Is there any discretion for the City of Dublin in this matter?
That's a, it is a legal question. I don't, I've researched this before for another occasion, and I don't believe that the city council has any discretion to not levy and to collect the tax at this millage rate once they certify it to us. The only thing I could possibly see that might be a way around that is if there was some problem with the procedures that were undertaken by the school in trying to certify to us that rate. And the only reason why I think that might be is because, you know, we ultimately are responsible, and if somebody were to sue about the, or bring litigation about the tax being levied, they're going to bring it against us. So if we had any doubt about the procedures being followed, then that might be a basis to not vote on this today and, you know, delay the vote until we could become certain that the procedures have been followed. As far as Mr. Daniels and I can tell, they have advertised appropriately, and as far as I know, held the three public hearings that are required for a tax increase, their notice appears to be sufficient.
Okay. So I'm looking at the certification letter that was received from the Dublin City Schools. It looks like it came in last night, and it says that they are certifying that they have voted to approve the 18.564 millage rate, and that they are directing the city council to levy and collect the same, and they are further certifying that they have followed the steps necessary for certification, and they provided a copy of the notice of property tax increase that ran in the newspaper, as well as a copy of the computation of the millage rate rollback. So in the opinion of staff, is this appropriate certification that now requires the city council to act?
It is.
Okay. All right. Do we have any questions for staff regarding this?
So in layman's terms, we have no option but to adopt and certify.
That's my belief. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Given the legal requirement, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion from Councilman Jones to accept the certification provided by the school board, a second from Councilman Colby. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. The ayes have it. All right. My understanding is that we have now done our duty as required by law to adopt the school system's millage rate, which is a tax increase of 24.71%. It's actually an increase in the taxes levied of 30%, well, over 30%. At this time, do we have any comments from council members? We'll start with Councilman Brown. Councilman Brown, any comments at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to say that I, you know, this is a very taxing situation, no pun intended, but, you know, we're in a, in a situation where a 25% increase in taxes on, on our constituents is, is going to be no doubt a burden. You know, from, from that standpoint, I think that, that everything should have been done to potentially alleviate that, and I don't think that was done by the school board. So again, it's a sad day when our constituents are going to have to take that on the chin.
All right. Thank you for those comments. Councilman Jones, any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say, you know, we, everyone here is concerned about, the school got their own board, they make their own decisions. And yes, it's, we have to certify it, but that's, that's them. I mean, the citizens that, and I said this before and I'm going to say it again, when you go to a school board meeting, it's empty, like it is now. We know that every meeting that we have is about full, but not everybody want to fill up a school board meeting when this problem comes up, when you should have been there the whole while, throughout the whole while, talking to them. Now, they made some promises last night, hold them to their promises. I mean, I can't tell another person how to run their house. I can't tell them what they're going to need to run their house. You can't sit there and tell me what's on my budget, what's my budget. You can't tell me what's going on, because you don't know what's going on in my house, because you're not in my house. So I think that what we doing, I mean, we done did our job, the citizens got a pro, they did what they last, they was out there yesterday, they did their due diligence. The board said they were going to do some change, to hold them to it. I mean, they come to us, albeit, and all I'm saying to the citizen, you come to us and you hold us accountable for what we say we going to do. They said last night, they going to look at the budget, they going to make some cuts, they going to do this, and hopefully next year we can get it down and keep getting it down, get it down to where it's reasonable. But in that, we need to sit there and hold them accountable. The superintendent, he's not elected, but you got to let officials, they need to be held accountable for what they said and what they do, just like we held accountable. So I'm not going, I'm not going to sit there, I don't know the process, all I'm going to say this, these secret meetings that keep going on, these secret meetings need to be public. If you had the public there with Matt Hatch, who came down the other night with all this right here, and the public would have been there, I don't need no secondhand hearsay of what's going on this year, this year. If I'd have been there to hear for myself, I could have made a judgment for myself. So that should have been a public meeting that would, where the people could have came. So if we want to do that again, let's get those same people that was down here the other night to explain this to the public, what's going on with the school, so everybody can make their decision. I don't want to hear from nobody else what went on. I want to hear for myself and make my own decision, and everybody deserve that's right to. So that's part of the problem we got, but I can't tell them what's going on. All I'm looking out for right now is what's best for the city of Dublin, our employees, and our citizens for the city of Dublin side. Once again, from the city of Dublin side, what the city of Dublin is doing, not what Dublin City Schools is doing. Do it affect the business that we do? Yes. Have we sat down and tried, have we sat down as a board and talked with their board? Not certain people going, I'm talking about a board, 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 talking to discuss this. I'm not talking about yelling at each other or doing it, I'm talking about talking, having an adult conversation to talk about, and let them know, this is what we need, know that our citizens are hurt, we need to have that. We need to sit down and talk like adults. That's all I'm saying. That, they did what they did, do I like it? No. My, my house value went up. But I also say this, though, I know for a fact that my house was undervalued before, because of what, because of the neighborhood that it was in, because I know what I got. I know that. So at the same time, let's just be, I mean, it's what it is. I mean, we roll up chin, we take it. Nobody wasn't saying nothing. When they was in that deficit, you know, that six million dollar deficit, I ain't see all the outcry to help them out. I ain't see all this outcry to help them out. Yeah, we as the council, we was willing to help them out, but I didn't see all the public outcry to help them out when it was at that six million dollar deficit. So we going to do it, let's do it both ways. But thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you for those comments. Councilman Colby, any comments this morning?
I've thought carefully about my comments and have stayed up until two or three o'clock in the morning for the last three weeks, many, many nights, just very, very concerned about the holistic impact that this type of significant increase is going to have on our community. We only have the opportunity sitting on this council to make decisions for the city of Dublin and its municipality, but we know that the decisions that the Lawrence County Board of Commissioners make and the Dublin City School Board makes impacts every single constituent in this community. And as an at-large city councilwoman, I cannot help but to notice when these decisions are affecting the same people that our city of Dublin residents are being impacted by as well. And so I do see this as a holistic opportunity and also a holistic issue that we have. And so I just want to talk a little bit about crisis. And when we have a crisis in our community, we have three opportunities. We have an opportunity to learn, we have an opportunity to serve, and we have an opportunity to capitalize on that crisis and set a foundation for the future. And I think that that is something especially we can see in light of Hurricane Helene. We definitely saw this crisis come to our community. It didn't matter if you lived in Lawrence County, it didn't matter if you lived in the city of Dublin, it didn't matter if you had a child attending Dublin City Schools or any other schools. We had to learn together, we had to serve together, and we had to create opportunities to prevent any future damage in the future. And so that's what I saw our city do as a whole. I saw city board members, I saw Lawrence County Commissioners, I saw council members step up and step out, and leaders throughout our community, and neighbors come out to serve, to learn, and set a foundation for the future. And I think we learned a lot through that crisis. The other noteworthy crisis or event that I want to talk about tonight is, or today, is the, the tax assessment. The new tax assessment is a noteworthy and historic event, a once-in-a-decade event. Many of us may or may not be on council again when we see this type of increase. We had a 30% change in our tax digest, a 30% increase. And with that crisis, you could call it a crisis because many people were upset about their, the value of their properties going up, I also see that as an opportunity. We have an opportunity to serve, we have an opportunity to learn, and we have an opportunity to capitalize on it. The city of Dublin capitalized on that crisis slash opportunity and said, we are going to fully rollback our millage rate, and still we will gain $300,000 in additional funds from the 25% inflationary growth and the 5% real growth in our community. There are other boards and commissions that have decided not to do that. And I just want to, to share with you a couple of real scenarios, some of which were shared directly with me, that makes me so incredibly concerned about a 25% increase in taxes for property owners throughout our community. We're not just talking about the effect on the citizens of Dublin, we're talking about the effect of the citizens of our entire community, including Lawrence County, and including the businesses that employ our workers here from over a five to seven county radius. I had a constituent call me, an 80-year-old widow on a fixed retirement. Her income has not increased with inflation, she has not received any type of raise to her income, and yet she is being told she will be paying $825 extra on her city school tax only. $825 extra this year she will be paying. An 83-year-old couple who reached out and said they are on social security, and he worries about being able to pay his school taxes this year and his home being taken away because a lien will be placed on his home. As a former real estate agent and a mortgage officer, I think about a young couple saving to buy a home, whose rent will increase this year because the, not only because of inflation, but because they're going to have to buffer the landlord's payment for his new 25% or more increased property taxes. I think about homeowners that talk to me all the time, who have owned their homes for 10-plus years within the city of Dublin, who are trying to decide whether they are going to continue living in the city of Dublin or moving to the county. They have decided, they have saved for an addition or remodel to their home here in the community, and instead they are deciding to downsize and move to the county or move to a different community altogether. And that is due in, in quite a large effect from the exorbitant school taxes. A business, when their business property value doubled, decides not to hire additional employees and instead expand elsewhere. These are all real scenarios that we are going to see. This is a moment of crisis. Again, it's a moment of crisis, but it is, just like Hurricane Helene, an opportunity, a time of great opportunity as well. I hoped that the city school board would take this incredible opportunity of 30% increase in their tax assessment to, to roll, fully rollback their millage rate for the first time since I've lived in Dublin in 15 years. But instead, in addition to a 30% increase in the value of our properties, property owners throughout the city of Dublin, we'll see a 25% increase in their city school taxes as well. I believe sitting on, in this position, I have a duty to be fiscally responsible for taxpayer funds, and I am extremely concerned. I'm concerned about a lot of misinformation that is out there, and I'm available to speak to any constituent who would like to talk about their tax bill and how this is going to impact you. I know a lot of people have a difficult time trying to calculate their tax bill. If you need help with that, I'm happy to try to assist you in that as well. I'm here, my phone number, my email is on our city website, and I just, I do think that this is a crisis for our community. But again, the city of Dublin will choose to learn from it, we will continue to serve, and we will continue to set a foundation for the future, just like those people however many decades ago who decided not to sell our revenue funds out to third parties and instead capitalize on that opportunity. We have that opportunity today with the increased tax assessment. So thank you again for the opportunity just to speak on this. I don't sit on the city school board, but I am very, very concerned about the property owners in Dublin and the effect that this increase will have on them.
Thank you for those comments, Councilman Colby. I know that you spent a lot of time thinking and praying about that and appreciate your extensive comments there. Councilman Griggs, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo what everybody has said so far. I will say that if we weren't mandated to do this by law, I would certainly not support it. I don't quite understand how, if as many people are talking to the school board members, that they're not doing something about it. It's like, it's like they do whatever's asked of them from the schools. I'm also concerned about the folks that are older with no children in school and have had no children in school for quite some time. They should be looking for a way to not be paying school taxes, in my opinion, as opposed to having a, an increase in school taxes when they're not even using the school or have a use for it. I feel like that the businesses are going to get hurt. And I, I think that the, the school board should have just stood their ground and, and done what was right for the citizens of Dublin. And that's all I've got to say right now.
Thank you, Councilman Griggs. Councilman Smith?
I only have too many comments, but I do wholeheartedly agree with what Sarah was saying, and also with, with Benny was saying, we do need to sit down at the table, we don't need to wait till we hit a crisis moment to sit down at the table. This need to be a year-long conversation, and this conversation that most definitely need to be had, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Mascara?
So I have a unique perspective on what has happened with the tax increase. Prior to being on the city council, I served on the Lawrence County Board of Assessors. This revow was ordered in 2021 and did not get approved until 2023. I was gone, I don't know what the reasons were, but typically, the ideal revow is, I think, four, four years so the county can receive its public utility money, there's a ratio they have to work through. So as a business owner on this side of it, I have seen an increase in, to almost $7,000 in one property, almost $6,500 in another property, a 25% increase in my home. And it's, it's hard, because now, as, not only as a business owner, as a city councilman, I have a fiduciary responsibility, and I've said it before, you've all heard me say it. The only job we have on this council is to be a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers' money. And for us to not be able to speak on that and to tell our, our citizens that they have a right to ask questions and then to be publicly accused of not understanding, well, I do understand. I've sat, I've sat on several boards. I understand what financial, what, what financial neglect looks like. We, we keep saying it's not our house, it is our house. We're paying the school board to take our tax dollars and educate our future workforce and the people that will return to this, this town. They're, they are our future, and I agree that we need to do our best job in, in providing these children with educations. However, what I cannot understand is how a school board that passed a 24, 25 budget that had an ending fund balance of $1.7 million and had already allocated the increase in insurance that, that they're saying that, that they need the money for, came back to our public and asked them for another $3.3 million. They didn't ask, they took it. And so I looked at people sitting in that room last night, people that I respect. I watched a 75-year-old man get up and speak and walk out with tears in his eyes. And I watched this, and I watched the school board and their spokesperson point fingers at our city council for, for, for not doing what's right. And so when we say, let's go sit in a room and talk, we've done that. We have done that as a council. We've given them insight into what's going wrong. We, we have tried to partner. We have. And so to say that we're being derelict in our duties as a council, it's, it's absurd because we've tried. Everybody in this room has sat with that school board and talked to them. And it, and, and at the end of the day, I look at the people, Chris's dad said it better than anybody else. He said 65% of that school is in poverty and rent. The landlords in this town are going to go up on rents, they have to, there's no choice, that are going to affect the people that they, that the school board's saying that they're trying to protect. And I don't understand that. It does not reason in my brain why we can hurt the people we're supposed to be protecting. And that's all I have to say about it.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Mascara. Any comments from Mr. Daniels? Mr. Powell? All right. I do have a few comments. I, when we started with this whole, what's the tax rate going to be, what's the millage rate going to be after the assessment notices went out, I was very clear that you have two different taxing authorities. You have the city of Dublin and you've got the city school board, and that anybody who wanted to talk about school taxes need to go to the school board. And I know that almost every council member in here, including myself, spoke with the administration and at least one or two school board members and/or have publicly stated their opinion about the school tax issue. Now, as everybody knows, the city of Dublin rolled back our tax rate, so there's a 0% increase for the city of Dublin, but we don't have power over the school board. What we do have, though, is a, I think, a requirement to inform our citizens of accurate facts about the school system and how that impacts our entire community. And there were some comments that were made as part of the school board taxing discussion about the city of Dublin that were not correct. So I want to correct the record right now. It was stated that someone potentially from the city of Dublin incorrectly reported freeport exemption amounts to the state so that the school board lost tax revenue that they otherwise would have gotten. I met with our financial officer, our treasurer, Blake Daniels, yesterday. We went through all the reports that the city of Dublin has provided to Lawrence County Tax Commissioner and to the State Department of Revenue. All those reports were accurate and correct, and what's more, they don't even actually report a dollar figure on freeport exemptions, just a percentage. So there was no error whatsoever in the city of Dublin's reporting of freeport exemptions. But more importantly, this whole thing is a red herring, because even if those numbers had been reported incorrectly, it would have had zero impact on the funding to the city of Dublin's school system. The freeport exemptions were not part of the equalization formula for how much money the school system gets. So the whole argument about freeport exemptions is a red herring, and I stand by the financial direction of our city and Blake Daniels and the way that he has reported and handled the financial affairs of the city of Dublin. The next issue was the collection fee. There was a lot made about how the collection fee has caused them to increase their millage rate. Well, you know, the collection fee is not just free money out there, the collection fee is to provide a service. It costs money to prepare the bills, it costs money to mail the bills, it costs money to handle customer service, to handle the reporting, it takes staff time. Do you know how much Lawrence County charges the Lawrence County school system? The exact same thing that the city of Dublin charges the city of Dublin school system, two and a half percent handling fee. And that is a statutory amount set by state law. And I haven't heard the Lawrence County School Board complaining about that regular, normal fee to the Lawrence County Commissioners. And they don't complain because it's a reasonable fee that is set by state law. The third thing I heard that was utterly ridiculous was that the city of Dublin had not consulted with the city school board in providing abatements to industries. As this council knows, the city council has twice appointed the superintendent of the city school systems to the Development Authority. The Development Authority is responsible for negotiating tax abatements with industries. So how is it that we did not consult with the city school system on industry abatements when the superintendent of the school system is, was the chairman of that authority and personally reviewed and approved those abatements to industries? To try to place that at the foot of city council is absolutely false. And I don't even know how anybody could make that argument with a straight face. This council has acted in total collaboration with the city of Dublin school system, the Lawrence County school system, and the Lawrence County Board of Commissioners on every type of abatement that has been provided to industries. And if we didn't provide some of those abatements, we wouldn't have some of the industries that are now paying the taxes that are funding the school system. The largest taxpayer in the city of Dublin is YKK, and YKK came here in part because of the tax abatements that were offered in the 1990s. So the three arguments that were made about the responsibility of the city council as to the problems of the city school system are totally off-base, and as mayor, I feel it's my duty to defend the conduct of the city of Dublin and to set the facts straight about that. The fact is that the city of Dublin has its house in order, the city of school system does not. To have a 25% tax increase in one year is irresponsible and unfair to the citizens. And I'm saying that because we have just suffered a hurricane. There are numerous homeowners throughout this whole town who have had unexpected out-of-pocket expenses. That's a hit to the amount of money that they have budgeted for this year. And then to have in one year, a single And then to have in one year, a single year, a twenty-five percent increase rather than, if you need the money, do it gradually, do it over time so that people can budget for it, don't hit them one time with a giant increase like that. How are, how are seniors supposed to deal with that? We've got so many elderly seniors who are on fixed incomes in this community. How are they supposed to budget for their groceries, for their medical expenses, when you get out of the blue a twenty-five percent tax increase? That is so unfair and irresponsible. I give the city school system an F for money management. They have earned an F in math and an F in accountability, but they sure do have an A-plus blame game because they wanna point fingers at everybody else. They wanna say the state doesn't give them enough money, that the city doesn't collaborate. They have a spending problem, not a funding problem. Now, it is time for us to have a serious discussion about education reform in this community. If Dublin is continue, is to be able to continue to grow, we have to fix this problem. And this impacts all of us, not just us in the city, also everybody in the county too. The city of Dublin is the economic engine for this whole community. And if that economic engine falters, then we're all in trouble. Maybe last night was the wake-up call that we needed to begin a serious discussion about education reform in this community and the millions of dollars that we are wasting on duplicating administrative costs. We have got to start talking about what the next generation of education looks like for Dublin and Lawrence County, and I hope that we can begin that discussion as soon as this meeting is over. With no overcomments, we're now adjourned.
Did you get all that?
No, I was sleeping.
This ain't fun, but it's necessary. I had somebody, a board member say last night...